Good evening. My name is Judy Miller, and I want to welcome everyone to the February 6th meeting of the Dover Sherborn Regional School Committee. We are pleased to hold this meeting at Dover Sherborn Middle School this evening and are also live streaming with DSC TV. Please note that the meeting is being recorded. Tonight it is my sad task to acknowledge the passing of a member of our community, Jeff Brown, whose wife Amanda is a colleague of ours and has served on the Sherborn School Committee for several years, and who leaves three children, Jonah Lee and Susanna. Our thoughts and prayers, love and compassion are with the Brown family, and we hope that in the days, weeks, and months to come, our community will embrace and support them. May Jeff's memory be a blessing to all who mourn. And with that, I will see, do we have any community comments? Okay, that's good. So then we will move on to, oh, are our student council representatives here?
Not this evening. Busy schedules.
Okay. What did you say?
Busy schedules.
Yeah, I can't understand that. Okay, so then we'll move on to Superintendent McCoy's comments.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for starting the meeting, Judy, that way. I'll be brief because Demi and I had a lot of opportunities to update you last week at the joint meeting. Hopefully, you had a chance to see the newsletter that went out yesterday. There was lots of information in it. We'll continue to try to provide as much information to the broader community as you are obviously curvy to on a month-by-month basis because we think it's important for everybody to know about the work and the goals of the district. In the newsletter, we reminded people of the upcoming events. On Thursday night, we'll be here at 6:30 in the library with members of our leadership team talking about restorative practices and what that looks like relative to discipline and how we're moving forward with that in the district in a thoughtful, slow process. And then later in March, we'll have some events around the portions of graduate, including a college panel and an industry panel. I want to formally recognize and thank Mr. Conklin for facilitating and organizing Desi's visit last week. It was a lot of work that went into that, a lot of documents that needed to be uploaded, a lot of focus groups that needed to be brought together. So thank you for making that a seamless experience, and we look forward to getting feedback from them in a month or so. At this point with teaching and learning, our teachers are going through the formative assessment process, so we're halfway through the school year. Today is day 101. So our teachers are meeting with their evaluators, talking about the progress on their goals and the work they're doing in the classroom, similar to what I did with you all last week. Our new HR director, Robin Tassino, is working with our principals on streamlining our hiring process. So she had a great meeting with them yesterday, and we are continuing to work together to make sure it's seamless from posting to onboarding to supporting and mentoring our teachers. So more to come on that, but just after February break, we'll be posting for positions that we know will be open either because of retirements or just changes in life. And lastly, I just wanted to touch on the topic of cell phones. I know it was brought up a few meetings ago about our thoughts around what other schools are thinking about, and some have implemented around banning cell phones. So as you know, up through eighth grade, students are not allowed to have cell phones on them, and then at the high school level, they do. I talked to Mr. Smith about it, and he's going to continue the conversation with his leadership team and his department chairs. I think what he's trying to do is balance what we all try to do as parents and as educators is make sure our students have access to learning and interactions and socializations and prepare them to be responsible young adults who are going to have these devices in college and beyond. So he's going to work with his team to try to find a balance between that. I think the good news, and having a high schooler now myself and visiting classrooms, most classrooms do have the cell motel. So when the students go in the room, they drop in their phones and they're offline for that period, unless the teacher plans on using it for an instructional purpose. But most students have their laptops for that anyways. And I purposely went through break time a couple times in the last week and the lunchroom, and the kids are socializing. So I think there's good news that we don't have a lot of some of the issues that perhaps other schools do. And I will say, I think it's sometimes a safe haven for students who don't like to socialize during break and lunch. So Mr. Smith is well aware of these variables much more than I am, so he'll continue to work with his team, but I'll keep you posted on what they think. Thanks.
Thank you, Beth. I think that's a really thoughtful process, and I think that DS does a magnificent job at preparing our high school students for college, both socially, emotionally, and educationally. And so I think that's a great consideration. Other questions, comments? Maggie?
No, I just wanted to say thank you for doing the inquiry. And also, I mean, anybody who's using a computer device these days, you can get all of your little thingies on there anyway. And I feel like I want the high school particularly to know that that puts a burden on the faculty to have to, you know, police solve that. And it's, I feel like you guys are really putting the energy into creating lots of opportunities for kids not to have to be on their phones and feel perfectly comfortable with that.
Yeah. All right, so moving on to financial reports. Dawn.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So you have a pretty short and sweet warrant report, based on, we met mid-January last time, so that's why it's so short. And I think Colleen for signing for us. Moving on to your fiscal year '24 monthly report, there's not a lot of bold, which that means there's not a lot of new information. Quickly, just on revenue, it's helpful to look at sort of the revenue statement as we start talking about the budget because you're going to understand what the E and D that's being applied. So we'll take a quick snapshot of that, and you'll see that we have a positive variance in both interest income and our Chapter 71. So hold that thought for when we get to the budget discussion. Nothing to say on the operating expenditure side, which is good news that there hasn't been any changes. There are a couple of new pieces of information on some of our capital projects. So we've made huge progress on the rooftop air handlers. We're actually going out to bid on that on February 28th with a bid opening date of March 27th. We are looking at a higher number than what we have approved right now, but we are putting the bid out with alternates so that we'll have choices, we will have options. And so we can say we're going to do the option where we have the money that can fund it, or we're hoping it will get a very competitive bid, and with just a little bit more money, we can do all seven. So fingers crossed, we are seeing some relief, at least in the lead time for these units, and hopefully a little bit on the pricing. But it's still a pretty volatile market out there in the construction world. But that was positive to see that we have, actually, we had a review of all the bid documents just last week and set the timeline, so more to come on that. The other thing that's out to bid right now is on the bleachers. So the site work is out actively on bid. We had our site visit on January 31st. We've had inquiries on the bid package, and the opening date for those bids is February 14th. So I might have some information for you when we meet on the 14th that I can share informally. And again, that's just the site work because we were able to purchase the bleachers and the installation of that piece through the collaborative purchasing agreement. So we're just bidding the site work. So then, once we have the final number, is where then we'll go out and look for other funding sources. But I wanted to get the final number so that we knew exactly what we were looking to fund, and we'll keep you updated on that. But the timeline is to have this up and finished by the third week of August. So it will be a change visually because it's going to basically be sort of an apparatus that's going to be from the 20-yard line to the 20-yard line with the press box integrated. So it's going to look much different than what you see out there right now. And every time I go out there, I'm just like, oh, my gosh, this is so tiny. So good news on that front. We'll keep you updated, but huge momentum on both those projects.
It'll be far sturdier, too.
Far sturdier. They promised me that you would not be able to jump on them and bend them. No jumping.
Questions on that piece? Okay, so shall we move on to?
The operating budget.
The operating budget.
Okay. So I did leave you hard copies by your nameplate so you can keep your notebook updated, if you would like, of the key budget documents that we are presenting tonight. And so again, we look at this into, because you actually have the revenue sources and your expenditure sources. So if we can find more revenue, right, it helps defer, or it helps to decrease the members' assessments. So looking at the revenue, obviously, you might have heard that the governor's budget came out, and with that, we get preliminary cherry sheets that tell us what our projected Chapter 70 revenue is going to be, as well as Chapter 71. I will say in general, it wasn't the best news for any school district, and some school districts that rely more heavily on Chapter 70 are really feeling the pinch. More than 74% of districts received less than 3% increase on their Chapter 70. We received like a 1.3% increase, but 50% of districts received the 1%, the 1% increase. So I give you those numbers just to say that there are a lot of districts that are in the same situation that we are. We're fortunate that this is, we don't rely heavily because of the percentage, right, of this to our budget, but it's still, we'd love to see it higher. We are seeing a little bit less of what's hitting our, sort of our revenue projections over, less than the 1.3% because we did see an increase in our school choice. Well, when you're only talking that you're going to get a 30,000 increase, and then the school choice that they're predicting is 10,000 more, that only leaves 20,000 that we're seeing. So you can see that we're only bringing in $26,000 of additional revenue even with the updated Chapter 70, or Chapter cherry sheet. On the other side, with reimbursement, we're seeing a little bit of a smaller increase than within your version 1.0 because the cherry sheet for Chapter 71 is less than what we have in this year's cherry sheet. Remember, we always start with this year's cherry sheet when we're building the budget. So the number went down, so we're not seeing, we're actually seeing a decrease there in what we projected. That is very, that fluctuates a lot. The people out there who, you know, analyze the number are saying it looks about, it's probably about 80% reimbursement rate. Again, you know, mandated is 100 for regional transportation. We were seeing in the 90s during sort of the COVID, and that mainly, though, was because not everyone was providing transportation, so there was more money to give to schools that were. We still have not received our first transportation payment this year, which gives me a guideline of how it's going to let go. And so with that, I think that's one thing that we'll just always have to like budget conservatively, and if we do get more, then that will be given back to the towns the following year through your E and D. So that wasn't the best news. Normally, those are both red numbers. And then we take the opportunity now that we are in February to look at where we do have excess revenue, that if we had known we were going to have that revenue, it would have been an offset to the assessments this year, so we build it into next year. So we're bringing forward $230,000, which is just a little bit under our projection of positive variances in transportation and our interest income. So that's been our philosophy over, I think, the last seven, eight years, is that we specifically earmark E and D to be used based on the revenue excesses that we have in one year to apply to the following, and therefore, you're never going to be on a fiscal cliff. Any questions on the sort of the revenue? So all in all, it's a reduction in the revenue or the town's assessments of just under $200,000 that helps offset. So looking at the expenditure, side version 2.0 is always when we roll out the salary reductions from known educator retirements because we're past the February 1st date in the contract where they could change their minds if they gave us early notification. Doesn't mean that we still won't have more retirements, but the retirement incentive that's in the contract says they tell us by November 1st, they have until February 1st to pull that back. So now that we're past February 1st, we do know that we have several known retirements, and so we're looking at a reduction in salaries of $180,000. Just so you know, that means our hiring target for those replacements is around an M3. That's how we decide what the savings is. There's a quadrant around that M3 that we'll work with, but that's sort of the target that we give for the positions that actually we know are, the particular positions that are up for retirement this year. We have looked, as you know, in version 1.0. We've added a, we requested an addition of a third middle school counselor. By doing that, you're allowing a student to have the same counselor, six through eight, and that continuity, I think, is great for building relationships. With that, when we look closer at what the middle school academic coordinator position does, which is only in its second year here, that position really is helpful for transitioning students back who've been out for medical leaves, personal leaves, right? With having this third counselor and the caseloads that they will have, they will be able to assume those responsibilities and probably be more efficient at doing it because they know the child, they know the student, they know their schedule. And so we are to sort of make it more fiscally responsible. We're looking to eliminate that position, but it helps offset the middle school counselor that we've added. We also have our special education. Both schools look at their projected needs and EA's based on the student cohort, and so looking at that, they are recommending that we can reduce three EA positions in the budget for next year. As you know, in your December meeting, you approved some additional appendix C ratios. Some were increases, some were additions. The impact of that is the $11,418 that we're adding into the budget. And then the last number deals with health care, and I will say that you'll still have, could see another health care adjustment in version 3.0 because at this point, we still don't have the approved rates from West Suburban Health Group. The board meeting for the approval is going to be February 15th, which unfortunately is even after the February 14th date. However, I have been asked to join the steering committee, and we do have a steering committee meeting on Thursday, this Thursday, where the steering committee usually recommends the rates to bring forward to the board. So I will have an idea. It's rare that what the steering committee approves is not what the board approves, but I probably won't formally bring that before the February 14th meeting, but say that for the March meeting. But based on some of the information that West Suburban hath provided, we do know that will be somewhere under 10%, not the 12% that we moved forward with in December. So with that, along with taking our current participation as of February, and I had mentioned that we were looking at, because there is a, in general, we talked about the food service and the abundance of reserves, we're able to probably, we're able to charge them for their health care cost because we actually charge community ed, we charge other revolving funds, so as long as you're consistent, you can do that. So we're recommending that we pick up, we cost share that 50/50. So by bringing that cost savings in, because some of that money is going to move over to food service, the increase from 10 to, or decrease from 10 to 12, and we have a little bit lower participation as of February, we're bringing forward a reduction in health care of $155,000. So with that, we're looking at just a little under $500,000 that we're bringing, are taking off the operating expenditure side of the budget. Any questions on any of those particular adjustments?
I know you said this, but can you explain again the salary reductions from the retirements and how you project that new number into the budget?
Right, so right now, they're in the budget at their experienced educator rate, right? And then we say, okay, so if we're going to replace them with someone who's around the M3 on our matrix, that number, subtract it from where they are, and that difference is a cost savings.
Okay, and so that's an educated estimate?
It is. It's a guide, it's right.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But we should be in that ballpark, and if you take all the different retirements and say one goes high, one goes low, we hope that at the end, it averages, that the new hires are all coming in around your M3.
That makes sense, thank you.
Yeah, and there are some years where we may recommend a little higher. It also depends on the position. Like in the past, if we had AP Chem or things that we know you don't necessarily want a less experienced person because we want to maintain the academic excellence that we have in that, we might go like to an M6. But these positions, we all felt comfortable that an M3 would get us. And it also is a nice mix to have in your, sort of your cohort of staff, because we do have a pretty experienced staff. So it's nice to bring people in who are going to, that have their time to sort of stay here for a long time and move up the matrix. So that is basically how that is.
Yeah, that makes sense, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions?
So overall, then, you know, we came initially at a increase of 4.88%. We're looking at a 3.23% increase at this time. Knowing that version 3, we'll take a closer look at the use of E and D, which won't change your total operating expenditure, but it will bring some, could bring some potential relief to the town's assessments. And then we'll see where health care goes as well. Again, it's going to be less than 10%. Every 1% in our equation right now is about $25,000, so that's what we might see a little bit. We're not going to see 100,000. We've taken the bulk of it now. We'll just have a little bit of refinement in the numbers once they're approved, because they're more like in the 8% to 10% range. So I might not have anything, I might have a little bit. But I do think it's positive with the universal free lunch that we can reestablish sort of the cost share with food service. So way back, we did do this. And along with knowing that they also cost share the Norfolk County Pension Retirement Contribution, we were able to add that back in, but there was a point in time where they were not, they were operating at a deficit, and so we had to slowly start bringing that stuff back into the general fund. So it's exciting to see that we can push it back out. We're still going to have funds to be able to reinvest in our kitchen equipment. I think I mentioned at the joint meeting that we also know that we're going to be able to switch off some of our cafeteria tables using food service because those tables are used predominantly for food service for the lunches. So it's nice that we don't feel that constant, just like we just don't have any money, and if something breaks, what are we going to do? So that has been a positive from the free lunch. And just seeing the participation rate, we definitely have, you know, a large percentage of students here who take advantage of the food. I feel like I have other things to say, but I think that sort of summarizes everything. I will just point out that one of the other items that doesn't impact your operating budget but could impact the members' assessment is how minimum local contribution is calculated. So with the governor's budget comes new numbers for the foundation and the minimum and local contribution. And this year, luckily, we saw just a little bit of a swing in the, against, a little bit against Sherburne in that when the numbers come in, Sherburne took a little bit more, I'm talking like less than 30,000 than Dover did, if you just take those numbers and add them into our old calculation. So that was, that was good news. That always can be, can swing either way. We've seen it swing very negatively towards Sherburne in the past, so that was a positive. And, you know, I always say we bring out the high-water mark and just wait, we'll make it look better. Here we are, hopefully, making it look better. And just so you know, like last year for salary reductions, we had $185,000 at this time. That is a key piece that makes us be able to sustain our budget, is making sure that we take advantage of when someone retires, that we replace them at a lower cost. And I can't stress that enough. That is actually, you can see that. That's sort of what helps us make this budget work from year to year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. I have to say, in a year where inflation is so high, seeing that our budget is increasing only 3.23% over last year is a magnificent tribute to your good work, your spectacular work.
Well, I say no a lot, as Beth can tell you.
So thank you, Dawn.
And as, if you see any other, you know, as you're looking at this closer, if you have any other questions, it still might be a good time to go back and look at your details, you know, because I think sometimes we lose sight of the bigger picture because we just focus on the adjustments, but before we come in March. So in March, what we'll do is, if I do have additional budget adjustments to present, we'll do that first, and then we'll close that meeting and open for your public hearing, do a more formal presentation with PowerPoint for the budget meeting. And when we come back, then you'll have your final discussion, and then we will make the final vote for the budget that then we'll move on to the towns for their, for their work moving forward. And you have all those dates in your package to get us to the very end.
All right, great. Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks very much, Dawn. Okay, so we're going to move on to the policy that Angie so competently wrote to add a MEKO representative to the school committee. And I don't want to put you guys on the spot, but either Kate or Angie, do you want to talk about the evolution of this policy or?
Kate, you do it.
Okay. It's happened to me in meetings before when people have said, Judy, so what are you, and I'm like, you know?
No, 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 I'm, I haven't prepared, but I'm thrilled to speak. So for years, you know, I worked with the MEKO department separately from the school committee, and Monique Marshall-Viel, our amazing MEKO director, we've been trying to always find ways to include the Boston parents' voice more. And years and years ago, pre-pre-COVID, looked into, could we have somebody from Boston officially on our school committee, a voting member, and learned from both Dover and Sherburne Town Halls that it's a state regulation, you have to have an address in the town to be on the school committee. So this is kind of the next best thing, to have more Boston voice. I think those of us who are liaisons to the MEKO program try to do the students and the parents' justice, but to have somebody here representing how they feel and how, and how the other families feel is so much more powerful. So I'm thrilled, I know a few other districts have started to do this model, and I'm just thrilled that we are looking at it.
Yeah, I agree, and having, having the voice at the table is very powerful because things that you guys have said at meetings has changed my mind on issues over the years, and I think it may have the same effect, which is really important because it enfranchises all of our families. And that's a big chunk of our families, you know what I mean? So, yeah, I think it's wonderful. So you guys, Angie, do you want to?
Well, I mean, the language is, you know, it's based on what other districts have done too, so that it's tried and true, it's nothing, it just states exactly what it is. The only unique part about us is there are three, three different committees. So each committee will either have one person or co-people, because I understand that it is hard to travel back and forth. And we spoke the last time, too, that perhaps this would be something that Zoom may be an available outlet, because it is a lot to trek out here and 5 o'clock rush hour to trek back. So it's, each committee gets one person or two co-people, and they just meet with their committees and then jointly as well. And I think that perspective is everything. I think when we went down there last year, it was enlightening, and I learned a lot, and I think there's a lot that we can all learn. So the language, there's nothing unusual. If you have any questions about how it's written, like I said, the only thing unique to us that I didn't see in others was the fact that we had to do it for all our committees, so everybody has a voice.
Are there any comments on the language? No. Yeah, because Angie, you're a wonderful writer. And are there any comments on the topic itself?
No, I highly support this.
Just one clarifying question. So the, this MEKO representative will be chosen by the Dover Sherburne MEKO parent organization, and I'm assuming Monique Marshall-Viel, our MEKO director. And then every year, they can re-up or not? And then every year, they can re-up or not?
Right.
Exactly.
Exactly. Yeah. Because, I mean, that's the thing, too, is, you know, when you went up, because I looked at theirs and I was like, oh, so that's interesting how they choose it. But it's true. I mean, it's, because we vote amongst our peers, so these are people that they would know.
Yeah, well, there's a, there's a Metco, the Dover Sherburne Metco Parent Group, they're Dover Sherburne, Boston Metco liaison, so yes. Yeah, great.
All right, good. So this is the first read, and so we'll have this on the agenda for our next meeting and we'll vote on it. This is probably the shortest meeting we've ever had.
Hey, Dawn, she's wonderful. Not yet.
Okay. So I think we're on to the consent items. Did anyone find anything that needed to be corrected in the minutes?
No.
And the sports medicine policy, which I have to say, I was bowled over.
I was. So amazed.
That was like a whole treatise on sports medicine.
So good.
Oh, my God. I couldn't believe how fabulous it was. But are there comments, questions, anything anyone wants to have changed? Or are we ready to move forward with the? Okay.
We would vote on that next meeting?
No, we vote on it now because this is the second read.
Oh, yeah.
So it's part of the consent agenda, so we, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Including the?
Including, thank you. Including the December 5th minutes and including the sports medicine policy, which was in the January 16th package.
So moved.
Kate, so moved?
Second.
Maggie said second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. Then there are informational items that you have seen in there. And if anyone has agenda items for our next meeting, the next meeting is joint meeting with all three committees and the?
No, it's with you and the warrant and advisory.
That's what I do.
Yeah, so it's really not a, the only agenda item is to meet. So there's no other business except.
Are there going to be Valentine's treats?
Is it Valentine's night, right?
It is.
Do the chair.
Oh, my God, all right.
And I think we're looking at a 7:00 start for the Regents piece.
Okay. And you will be, it will be your dog and pony show.
So we can?
Or shall I?
We'll be, I think we'll just really walk through.
Okay, we ought to speak beforehand.
Exactly.
Where are we holding that thing this year? It's rotated, right?
I think, are we going to plan, I think we're doing it here, correct? Yeah, yeah. We were rotating and I think we decided this is still.
Well, this is the first time in a while it's been in person because it has been.
We were in Zoom, yeah.
Zoom. Because I remember one time it went forever and I had to stand up to step away to go to the ladies' room. And I came back and they're like, Angie? I was like, oh, I've been here for three hours. And I didn't move.
I tend to blot those out of my.
You remember that? It was that really long one. It was awful.
Well, I'm grateful you stepped away and you didn't just bring the Zoom with you.
All right, so you and I will chat offline on that. And I think we can adjourn then. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Colleen Burt.
Colleen Burt, all in favor? It is unanimous. We are adjourning at 7:06.
Judy, this is a prize.
Wow.